Hello and welcome to the Capitola Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, August 21, 2025. Meeting is open to the public with both in-person attendance at the City of Capitola Council Chambers at 420 Capitola Avenue, and remote viewing is also possible. The Planning Commission and staff are attending in person, and members of the public wanting to offer public comment need to be present. The public can livestream the meeting on the city's website, on YouTube, or on Zoom, following the link on the meeting agenda. As always, this meeting is Cablecast Live on Spectrum Communications Cable TV Channel 8 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99, and is being recorded to be read broadcast on the following Mondays and Fridays at 1:00 PM on Spectrum Channel 71 and Spectrum Channel 25. Recording the meeting will also be available on the city's website after the meeting. Our technician tonight is Tricia. As a reminder, please turn off your cellphones during the meeting. Can we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Howard.
Here.
Commissioner Q.
Here.
Commissioner Welch. Vice Chair Christensen. Chair Esti.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. All right, item number two, additions and deletions to the agenda.
Staff did receive additional materials for multiple items on the agenda tonight. Two emails for item 7A, seven emails for item 7B, and one email for item 8A. All have been included in the agenda packet.
Okay. And item number three, we'll delay that till the next meeting, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you. We will go on to item number four, Oral Communications. Please review the section on how to provide comments at the Planning Commission for instructions. Oral Communications allows time for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on any consent item on tonight's agenda, or any topic within the jurisdiction of the city that is not on the public hearing section of the agenda. Members of the public may speak for up to three minutes unless otherwise specified by the chair. Individuals may not speak more than once during oral communications. All speakers must address the entire legislative body and will not be permitted to engage in dialogue. Do we have anybody in the public that would like to present something tonight? Please step up to the podium.
Hi, my name is Goran Klapić. I worked secured as a security guard for Zeldas on the beach many, many years ago here at the front door with my black brother George. We kept it clean at that time. During that time, I talked already to Police Chief Andrew Dally back then. There was some cocaine trafficking going on here in the village committed by Baybar people here, which was next to Zeldas where I did security with George in front of the door. So I know what I'm talking about. It's all on camera, by the way. And what I'm saying is I'm not looking for a lawsuit or anything, you know? I just know that one time when I was walking around in Capitola, I think a car hit me or something. I didn't see it coming. And I used to play basketball at J Street Park occasionally, but I cannot do that anymore because I have an injury on my right leg. So as I said, I will repeat this if I have to go to court again, but I said here, it's not a problem. I was a cop one time overseas and in the army. Thank you very much for listening. God bless you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments at this time? Please step up.
Hi, my name is Jeff Lee. I live on Wesley Street, and my, I guess, comment and/or question has to do with 600 Park Avenue. Is now the appropriate time for questions on that?
No, we'll be talking about that as part of item 7B.
My apologies.
No problem. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Terry Thomas, Park Avenue. I just wanted to say that the reason that I sent the email to the City Council about the cameras, the flock cameras in Capitola, is mainly because I just filled out two forms for class-action lawsuits because our identity has been hijacked. So my concern about flock cameras is I don't want my, our identity hijacked again by it being put out there by other entities, including the city. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments? Could you please step up so we can record you on the meeting?
Hello, my name is Tiffany. I live on Orchid Avenue. I'd like to address 600 Park Avenue. Is now the time to make that comment?
No, we'll talk about that in the public hearing on 7B when we're talking about the zoning changes.
And there's the time to make the public comment.
Yes. Yep, thanks. Okay, any other public comments at this point? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to item five, the Consent Calendar. All matters listed under Consent Calendar are considered by the Planning Commission to be routine, enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the Planning Commission votes on the action unless the Planning Commission requests specific items to be discussed for separate review. Items pulled for separate discussion will be considered in the order listed on the agenda. The only item on this is the approval of the July 17 Planning Commission minutes. Does anybody want to discuss that? If not, can we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Yeah, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Howard.
Yes.
Commissioner Q.
Aye.
Chair Esti.
Aye. Thank you. I'll move on to item number six, Planning Commission and Staff Comments. Let's start with the Planning Commissioners. Any comments at this point?
Not at this moment.
At the meeting? No, okay, and Staff?
I just want to announce that at the City Council meeting next week, we'll be talking about zoning options for mall redevelopment. And that's next Thursday at 6:00 PM.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item seven, Public Hearings. Public hearings are intended to provide an opportunity for public discussion of each item listed as a public hearing. The procedure is as follows. There's a staff presentation, there'll be Planning Commission questions, then we'll have time for public comment, then we'll bring it back, and the Commissioners will deliberate, and finally, we will make a decision on the item. The first item on the agenda is 1400 Wharf Road.
Okay. Thank you Chair Esti and Commissioners. Before you tonight is an update to the design permit and CDP for the Capitola Wharf. And here's a picture of the Wharf, a recent picture of the Wharf. Hopefully, you've all been out there recently and enjoyed all the final enhancements that are coming together. Looks quite nice. And tonight, we're looking at amending the donor wall panel and its location. So next slide, please. So a little bit of history here. We are tonight looking at an amendment to the permit for the design permit and CDP. Back in 2024, the Planning Commission approved the design permit and CDP for the final Wharf enhancements. After that approval, the city was awarded a grant for interpretive signs on the Wharf, and it includes one kiosk near the entry, as well as four signs, one at each of the viewing stations with the binoculars at the different stations down the Wharf. So next slide, please. The remaining items are, there's more fun stuff to be added to the Wharf, so 10 wave-style bike racks, also four, the signs that I just mentioned, the four interpretive signs and one kiosk, and then also 40 bronze fish. And the fish will lead from the initial kiosk near the entrance and take you on a meandering path to each of the viewpoints. Next slide, please. So this is an overview of the site plan on the Wharf by the entry. The entry archway is labeled, and you can see the bathrooms. The bike racks are going to be in the area that's highlighted green. Currently, the donor panel wall, the beautiful mosaic dedication, the panel wall, is located where the bike racks are going to be going. And so tonight, we're looking for a decision on the future location of the donor panel. And if you could press forward, the first option that we're looking at is in front of the arch entryway, so it'd be on the right as you're walking out towards the Wharf. And the second option is as you walk through the Wharf to the left. Next slide, please. So this is showing the donor panel located to the right, right before you enter the Wharf. The donor panel will be raised so that there's more visibility for all the donors' names are on the fish, and some of them with the current elevation, it's very low. So by raising that, there'll be more visibility. And there's also an older panel behind this, which houses the electric and gas facilities for the Wharf. And so it'll be nice to kind of have this raised in front of that panel to hide that more because it's not the prettiest part of the Wharf. We're going to work on that on the future master plan update. Next slide, please. And this is showing what that would look like by the entryway. It's a little bit raised above the rail. Next slide. Option two is to place it after you've walked onto the Wharf to the left, and it also would be raised. Next slide, please. This is the image showing the donor panel in that location. I will say, when looking at this, at first, we thought about bringing it closer to the archway, but it really would impact the view of the first home in the Venetians, the pink house at the end of the Venetians. So we thought by bumping it out, they would keep their view of the bluffs, but there's still a lot going on, so it's not, you know, they still will lose a part of their view where in the other location, it's not as impactful. Next slide, please. So our recommendation tonight is to amend the amendment to provide direction. I will say we're, I do think option one is probably the least impactful option in terms of like protecting views, and we also, we received public comment letter on this as well. So with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? No questions. There was, I don't know if that was the right time, but there was a question, Nakeem an email today about no dogs on the Wharf. Is that a, I assume that's a City Council or City of Ordinance or something?
It's a City Ordinance. It's been in place for a long time. It has not been revisited. So at this point, there's still a prohibition on dogs on the Wharf. Seen a few out there, though, but that is.
Not highly enforced. Okay, let's go on to public comment. Are there any comments from the public about this?
Good evening Commissioners and Staff. I'm Gail Ortiz. I'm representing the Capitola Wharf Enhancement Project that helped raise funds for these amenities, and we wholeheartedly agree with option one. We feel that it doesn't disturb anybody's view and really protects us from the very faded panel, PG&E paneling. And we're just hoping that maybe we can get it up, you know, more than just a couple inches. You know, it could be up fairly high, I would think. The higher, probably, the better to cover that. So, and if you have any questions, love me, but that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on the Wharf, item A?
Hi, I'm Narendra Dev, resident of Capitola. You already echoed my major comment, which is we have dogs, and I walk with my dog every day, and it would be really nice to be able to take the dog along the Wharf. So that's my major comment. I really appreciate all the work done on the Wharf. I really like all the panels and the design, the benches, the picnic tables, really good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public before we bring it back to the Commission? Okay, hearing none, let's talk about it. We should discuss option one versus option two first, I guess. Any opinions?
Yeah, thanks. So I'm leaning towards option one, right off the bat, just from if we're going to do all this good work to improve the Wharf and make it look aesthetic, I think just having that out in the very front just leads into it. And if it serves the dual purpose of covering up that PG&E and the utility panel, you know, it's two birds with one stone right there. So that's the way I'm kind of leaning towards it.
And I lean towards this notion that it's less intrusive to the views, both off the Wharf and across the Wharf.
Yeah, I agree with both of your comments on that. Okay, so we'll go with option one once we, if we approve this. Let's talk about other items. Anything else, things about this that you want to talk about, would like change? All looks good?
Look great.
Yeah.
I did, I think in the plans, it shows it being lifted about six inches. Is there flexibility in that, in this motion? It would be nice to have flexibility in the motion.
The better. I agree with Gail Ortiz on that one.
He's got judgment, Al. You'll know if it's too low or too high.
Yeah, yeah, I think we're okay with that. Okay. Any other comments about this? I mean, my comment is I think they've done a great job. The plaques and everything are really very well designed, whoever did that. I think that's going to be a great addition. Okay, we have a motion then to approve this?
A motion to approve it.
And I will second that.
And a roll call, please.
Commissioner Howard, sorry. Commissioner Q.
Aye.
Chair Esti.
Aye. Okay, that is approved with option one as high as possible.
Just wanted to thank Staff. Katie's been wonderful to work with, and, you know, she just makes everything so easy. So I wanted to have kudos to Staff. Got a great one. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail.
We agree.
Okay, let's move on to 7B, which is a zoning code amendment primarily for the multifamily residents. And we'll have a presentation from the staff first, and then Ben or Ben only.
Got it. Yep. Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Ben Noble. I'm a city planning consultant assisting the city with the proposed zoning code amendments that are before you tonight. So in this presentation, I'll provide some background information on these materials, and then go through the proposed amendments. So I think, as we know, in 2024, the city adopted an updated housing element that was also certified by the State Department of Community and Housing Development. And the state certified the housing element as being in compliance with state law. The housing element requires the city to take certain actions, to implement programs in order to comply with requirements and state law. Some of those requirements in the programs are amendments to the zoning code. In 2024, there was a set of amendments that was adopted by the city. It included topics such as accessory dwelling units, housing for employees, and a variety of other topics as mandated by the Certified Housing Element. There's a couple of programs in the housing element related to zoning in the residential multifamily areas or the RM zones. And in 2024, the city decided to defer action on those amendments until 2025. The city also deferred action on amendments related to the Capitola Mall, which the city will also be considering this year as well. So the program in the housing element related to the RM zone is Program 1.6. And so 1.6 calls for the city to assess the maximum densities allowed in the RM zones and to determine if higher densities can help facilitate multifamily development. The program also calls for the city to review and revise as appropriate development standards, such as minimum unit size, setback, parking requirements, and height, to ensure that those standards are necessary and pertinent and do not pose a constraint on housing production. Here's a map that's showing the existing zoning map and the existing RM zone. So the zoning code currently divides the RM zone into three subzones, RML, RMM, and RMH. And the allowed density in those subzones range from 10 dwelling units per acre in RML to 20 dwelling units per acre in RMH. And RMM allows 15 dwelling units per acre. And on this map, it's the brown areas that are zoned residential multifamily. So in 2024, the Planning Commission discussed Program 1.6 about the RM zone at three different meetings, and considered some potential changes to the zoning map, as well as the allowed density within RM areas. And one of those proposals was to increase the density to up to 40 dwelling units per acre in 38 different areas that are currently zoned RM. After reviewing the proposed amendments and receiving public comment on the amendments, the Planning Commission directed staff to further review those amendments in 2025 to consider public feedback and to return back to the Planning Commission for continued discussion. In February of this year, the city hosted a community workshop. 19 residents participated, and were asked to provide input on which areas are suitable for additional multifamily development, and to also provide feedback on design features of multifamily development. Here's a map that shows seven areas that the public were asked to consider as being suitable for accommodating additional multifamily development. There are seven areas that are shown on the map, which we'll talk about in a little bit more detail later. On March 3, the Planning Commission had a meeting to consider this topic, at which the Commission received updates on these proposed amendments and received additional public comment. At this meeting, the Planning Commission expressed support for increasing allowed density in the seven areas that were presented at the community workshop, up to 30 dwelling units per acre in five of the areas, and 40 dwelling units per acre in two of the areas. So after the March 3 meeting, city staff met with Santa Cruz YIMBY and YIMBY Law to discuss a letter that they submitted regarding the proposed amendments. City staff also had discussions with the California Department of Housing and Community Development. And one of the outcomes of discussions with HCD was the city received confirmation from HCD that, in their opinion, the proposed approach meets the city's legal requirements under its Certified Housing Element, as well as state housing law. HCD did request one change, which was to increase the maximum allowed building height in the areas that allow 40 dwelling units per acre up to four stories. So based on the Planning Commission feedback at the March 3 meeting, as well as discussions with HCD, proposed amendments for the Planning Commission's consideration are provided in the packet tonight, and they would create two new RM subzones, RM 30, that would allow 30 units per acre, and RM 40, which would allow 40 units per acre. The proposed amendments also would amend the zoning map that would apply these new RM subzones to seven different areas, those same seven areas that were discussed at the community workshop and at the Planning Commission's March meeting. The proposed amendments also establish development standards in the RM 30 and RM 40 that would allow for those densities, and make a few adjustments to existing development standards in the other RM zones so that those development standards can reasonably accommodate development at the allowed density. So here's a map that shows the proposed zoning map amendments. So you can see here, there are seven areas, and it shows the existing zoning, as well as the proposed zoning for each of those areas. I won't go into detail on each individual area, but I do have some additional slides that we can look at together later if we want to look more closely at each individual area. Do you want to talk a little bit about the development standards that would apply within the RM zones under this proposal? So here's a table that shows the proposed changes and new standards in red. If it's not in red, if it's in black, it's an existing standard that doesn't change. I will note that the name of the existing RM subzones have changed. So RML became RM 10, RMM became RM 15, and RMH became RM 20, so that we can have consistency with our naming convention for our five RM subzones. So as you can see, in this development standards table, in the new subzones, it establishes a density of 30 dwelling units per acre or 40 dwelling units per acre. And then with height, in the new subzones, in RM 30, it allows three stories and a plate height of 30 feet with an additional six feet above that 30 for a pitched roof form. In the RM 40, as requested by HCD, we are allowing up to four stories with a 40-foot plate height and six feet for a roof form. I will note that in the RM 40, the fourth story would need to be set back no less than 25 feet from a side or rear property line that abuts a residential parcel. You'll see here in this table that there's also the additional six feet in building height for pitched roof forms in the RM 10, 15, and 20. This was added in response to Planning Commission feedback earlier in 2024, and is consistent with the approach taken for building height within the village. You'll see here also that there's a building coverage standard, no change in RM 10 and RM 15, but in RM 20, we have increased that to 45%. It was determined necessary, given our analysis of development standards, in order to allow for a density of 20 dwelling units per acre. In the RM 30 and RM 40, there's building coverage of 50% and 60%, and that was determined to be sufficient in order to allow for the densities in those subzones. So the proposed amendments also establish setbacks for each of the subzones. And first, looking And first, looking at the front setbacks, no changes in the RML, M and H. For the RM 30 and RM 40, we do have the 15-foot front setback consistent with existing standards, with the ability for the Planning Commission to approve a reduced and front street-side setback if that would allow for the development to comply with sidewalk and street tree standards elsewhere in the zoning code. And that was proposed because when looking at the specific areas for RM 30 and RM 40, we thought that a reduced setback could be appropriate in locations and would provide greater flexibility to move buildings away from property lines that abut adjacent residential neighborhoods. So that same ability to reduce setbacks applies to the street side as well. And then with the interior side setback, there is a requirement for the first through second stories to be a setback 10% of the lot width. And that's consistent with the existing interior side setbacks that apply within the RM zones. And then lastly, with the rear setback, the existing standard is based on a percentage of lot depth. And if there is a parcel that's particularly deep, and some of them are in the RM zone, that would require a setback then and that in our assessment would constrain housing production on those sites and, in our opinion, needed to be adjusted. And so we replaced that with a new standard that sets a rear setback of 10 feet or 15 feet if abutting an R1 zone. So that's an overview of the proposed development standards. And I know there's a lot of numbers in there, so we want to take a particular example to help illustrate exactly what has changed with the proposed amendment. So we'll use 600 Park Avenue as our example. The existing zoning is RML, and the proposed zoning is RM 30. So the density increases from 10 dwelling units per acre to 30 dwelling units per acre. The height currently is 30 feet. And with the proposal, it would be 30 feet to the top plate. If it's a flat roof, 30 feet is what it would be. But if there are pitched roof forms that meet certain requirements, there would be an additional six feet allowed. And the reason for that is we want to encourage pitched roof forms to create visual interest more in keeping with the existing Capitola character. Building coverage would increase from 40% to 50% because we determined that 50% was necessary to accommodate that density at 30 dwelling units per acre. And then with setbacks, there are a few changes with that, which I think I will use this slide to talk about. So you can see, highlighted in red is the 600 Park site. And it's surrounded by existing single-family homes on this side here, as well as a few homes with this cul-de-sac here. This would be the front property line. This would be an interior side property line on both sides. And this would be a rear property line. So with the front setback on Park Avenue, the existing standard is 15 feet. That stays at 15 feet with the ability for the Planning Commission to approve an adjustment if it can comply with streetscape standards and provides for a benefit to project design. For the interior side, the existing setback, seven feet for the first and the second stories, and it remains that way. There would be no change from what the existing standard is. For the rear setback, as I said before, that setback is a function of lot depth, 15% of lot depth. So with 600 Park Avenue being a deep lot, the required rear setback would be 99 feet, which is inconsistent with the existing development pattern and would pose a significant constraint on any redevelopment or additional housing that would be developed on the site. So what is proposed is a rear setback of 15 feet in this particular case because it abuts a single-family residential property. In addition to the setback standards that are unique to the RM zones, there's also development standards that apply to all residential multifamily. That's called the daylight plain standard. And essentially, what that standard means is that for any portion of a building above 25 feet, there's an additional foot of setback that's required beyond the additional setback. So if the building height is 26 feet, the setback would need to be one foot more than the setback for the first and second stories. At seven feet, it would need to be eight feet. So you end up seeing the result of the third story being stepped back, in most cases, probably about 10 feet from the minimum setback of the first and the second story. So that would apply as well as the setback requirement for the first and the second stories for all of the property lines that abut adjacent residential development. There are also development standards related to privacy that apply to all multifamily residential development, including any development that would occur in the RM zones. So for example, balconies, roof decks and other usable outdoor building spaces not allowed on upper-story facades that are abutting in R1 zoning district. Sliding glass doors, French doors and floor-to-ceiling windows are not allowed on upper-story facades abutting in RM zoning district. And windows on any story that are facing adjacent dwellings must be staggered to limit visibility into neighboring units. So these are all standards that are intended to address potential privacy impacts that might result from new infill development on multifamily lots. Okay, so that's the zoning code amendments for the RM zone. We also need to make a minor amendment to the general plan land use element in order to be consistent with the proposed RM amendments in the zoning code, as well as with the housing element. So it changes the land use element in the general plan to say that the maximum density in RM is 10 to 40 dwelling units, depending on the zoning classification. So just a minor housekeeping revision in the general plan for that. Okay, so that's the RM amendments. The other amendments that are before the Planning Commission tonight concern accessory dwelling units. The Planning Commission adopted ADU ordinance amendments in 2024 to address recent changes to state law and to clean up a few other matters as well. As required by state law, the city submitted the ADU ordinance to HCD for review and comment. HCD provided what they call a flyover review that recommended further changes to the ADU ordinance. And the reason they called it the flyover review is because they conducted its review as part of a process to ensure that the coastal commission staff and HCD are on the same page in terms of requirements related to housing within the coastal zone. But HCD took the opportunity to provide a very comprehensive set of comments related to all aspects of the ADU ordinance, which they provided to the city. So most of the changes that they requested were non-substantive and clarified existing requirements. And so we were happy to make those changes. There were a number of other comments, or there were a few other comments that were more substantive related to historic resources, homeowner associations and the number of detached ADUs on multifamily parcels. So I wanted to highlight those changes for you. So with historic resources, the existing ADU ordinance establishes architectural standards that apply uniquely to city-designated historic resources. And the ADU ordinance also says that if the ADU requires a discretionary approval, for example, if it's above 16 feet of height for a detached ADU, it is subject to the Historic Preservation Chapter within the zoning code, which triggers a potential review of the significance of the historic resource for decision-makers to use when acting on the application. So HCD has an interpretation of state law that cities can only apply historic preservation standards to properties that are on the state list of historic resources. We don't necessarily agree with that interpretation, but we were able to come to a compromise with HCD by saying that architectural standards for city-designated historic resources apply only in the coastal zone. 99.9% of the historic resources are in the coastal zone. So that was a solution to this issue that worked well for all of us. So we also added some additional standards that attached ADUs may not obscure, damage or destroy historically significant building faces. And this additional language was deemed important because it adds an additional layer of protection for these historic resources that, in most cases, are reviewed only through a ministerial process. Another issue is with homeowner associations. So in the existing zoning code, there's a statement that an HOA officer must sign an application for a ADU if the property is subject to an HOA. And that in that case, the application also must include a HOA statement that the ADU is authorized under HOA rules. This was another issue that HCD found to conflict with state law. So we removed that from the ADU ordinance. But the city will continue to require HOA approvals as needed for building permits when building permit applications come in. Okay, so the third topic is with detached multifamily ADUs. This is a straightforward change that's required by recent changes to state law that increase the number of detached ADUs that are allowed on a multifamily property. So in the existing code, with a new multifamily dwelling, you're allowed two, maximum of two ADUs, as well as maximum two ADUs for a new multifamily dwelling. With the proposed amendments, there's a maximum of two ADUs for new multifamily dwellings. So if there's an application for new multifamily dwellings, you're allowed up to two ADUs. But if the property has an existing multifamily dwelling, the maximum is eight ADUs, not to exceed the existing number of units on the lot. So if you had four multifamily units on a lot, you would be allowed up to four detached ADUs on the property. It's clear in state law that that's the rule. And so we've amended the ADU ordinance to be consistent with that. So one comment that staff received from a planning commissioner had to do with the definition of multifamily. And within the ADU ordinance, there's a very particular definition of multifamily development that is included in state ADU law. And HCD was very clear that the city must utilize that definition, even if it is different from the definition that applies elsewhere in the city and is defined in the glossary of the zoning code. So for the purposes of the ADU ordinance, we do need to use the state definition of multifamily. So in addition to the amendments that are before the Planning Commission in your packet, we're also recommending adding this statement in the ADU chapter that outlines the definitions, that says that if a definition in that chapter conflicts with the definition in the glossary, the definition in the ADU chapter controls. And we think we need to do that pursuant to state law and HCD direction on the subject. Okay, so that's... Few final slides in my presentation. So the amendments are considered a project under the California Environmental Quality Act. But the proposed amendments are exempt from CEQA review because they implement a certified housing element. That's for the RM zones. And they also implement state ADU law. So there was a bill that was recently adopted and signed into law that essentially said, if cities are implementing their housing element through a rezoning program, they are exempt from CEQA. So we're utilizing that new exemption. And then the exemption for state, for ADU law, something that's been on the books for a while. And so we're utilizing that exemption as well. And so no further analysis of environmental impacts is required for the proposed amendments. So with that, our recommendation is for the Planning Commission to consider and to adopt resolutions recommending that the city council adopt the RM zoning code and zoning map amendments, the RM general plan text amendments and the ADU ordinance amendments. And so with that, we are happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you, Ben. That's a lot of information. Let's start with some questions from the commissioners. Matt, you want to start?
So on the setbacks, you know, you go two stories up and then one back. Was there any discussion around having to step back from first story, second story, third story? So it would be less of an impact to those nearest to residential neighborhoods? In other words, why only step back after two stories, the 20 feet or whatever that is?
So the maximum allowed height in the R1 zone is 25, 27? 25 feet. And so to provide for a sensitive transition from that allowed height, we apply the increased step back from that 25-foot height limit. Increasing, requiring an increased step back from the first story would introduce a new constraint on housing development within the RM, which arguably could conflict with program language within the housing element that calls for the city to review and reduce constraints. And so for that reason, we are recommending that the city maintain the existing third-story step back requirement that already applies within the RM zone.
And then, I forget which Senate bill it was, but one of them allowed for bonus units if you hit nearby transit and other stuff. Does this... Does this supersede that? Does the new policy supersede it? Or could a developer come in and say, fantastic, I'm going to do 40 acres, 40 units an acre, and I get a bonus of X more units? Does that work?
Yeah, so, the state has established, what I call a belt-and-suspenders approach to facilitating housing production. And so, there are a lot of state laws that apply to proposed multifamily development that could potentially increase the density on any parcel, not just the RM. So, for example, I think you're referring to state density bonus law, that if a project includes a certain number of deed-restricted affordable units, they can ask for incentives and waivers and concessions from zoning standards. And so, yes, that would apply to proposed projects or would be available to an applicant for a proposed project in the RM zone, just like it would apply in any other zone in Capitola.
So, conceivably, you could be at 50 units an acre.
Yes, it's possible. And it would also be possible in other locations in the city as well.
I am curious, just as a small developer over time, is the economic models ever done for these developers that say, you know, you have this parcel, today it's 10 units, tomorrow it's 20 units? Is there any consideration given to making sure that these are profitable enterprises? Meaning, it's very expensive to build here. 20 units may not be profitable, but 30 might be. Did you factor those in your discussion?
Yeah, it's definitely something that we've been thinking about and really drives the thought process behind these proposed amendments. And so, beginning at the workshop in February, we identified these seven areas that are currently zoned for multifamily as being suitable for additional multifamily development. And then, we looked at those sites and we thought, well, how many units would we need to allow here so that it becomes financially feasible to redevelop? Right now, because of economic conditions for large projects, nothing's really financially feasible. So, conditions are always changing. And maybe interest rates will come down next week and we'll be faced with an entirely new set of conditions. But when looking at these sites, we did come to the conclusion that a allowed density of 30 dwelling units, at least 30 dwelling units per acre, would be necessary in order to make redevelopment economically realistic, let's say.
No questions?
Let's see, I'm lost a little bit on the math on your maximum ADUs thing because of our definition, or their definition of multifamily dwelling. So, we could take Park as an example, right? Which has a lot of multifamily dwelling units based on their definition. Two units put together form a multifamily dwelling, right? They've got quite a few of them, which means they can stack the place with ADUs right now.
They would be limited to eight.
Right, but they would have no restriction on going to eight ADUs on Park Avenue today.
That's correct.
In this language.
Yes.
Okay. And our previous rule was two.
Yes, but state law has changed.
The state law changed recently?
A year ago.
Okay, so that is pretty recent. Okay. And then, what's, remind me, what's our definition of multifamily dwelling? It's different than theirs.
Three or more, right?
Three or more, oh, okay. So, from two to three. Okay. And then, the, I guess it doesn't matter because you said 99% of our architecture, the city-recognized historic buildings are within the coastal, the 1,000-feet limit. Is that true?
Within the coastal zone boundary.
Yeah. So, then it probably doesn't matter, my next question. Okay, let's go, so, go back to the four-story thing on the 40 dwelling unit per acre. So, the height increase, the state wants us, they want us to go up to 40 feet plate plus six, so 46 feet total, which applies to only two parcels, basically.
Correct.
Right? And did we, did we look at the impacts of the R1 around those two properties?
Yeah, and for that reason, we require the additional step back of that fourth story to be 25 feet from the lot line adjoining the residential.
Effectively, the fourth story is 10 feet back. Yeah. Actually, it's more, it'll be more than that. It'll be 20 feet back.
Yeah, it would, built in its most impactful manner, it would be seven feet for the first and second, and then step back 10 feet, and then step back another 10 feet.
Seven, right. So, they're quite a bit. So, that probably rules out, in practical sense, a four-story. It's not going to be economically feasible.
Yeah, I mean, you know, these step backs increase costs of construction. And, but there is a very real sort of concern of neighborhood impacts. And so, we thought that that was an appropriate standard.
Delay plane is a good tool to use. Okay, thank you.
Chair SD, if I may, we've received, we receive a lot of questions on these updates. And one thing I just want to clarify, and I think Ben did at the very beginning, is that with the zoning code updates, it does not mean that these properties will be redeveloped. We don't currently have a project on any of these sites. And so, that's one of the first questions we get when it comes through the planning department. So, I just want to clarify that before we go to public hearing.
Andy, on that note, if there is a property comes up and the developer thinks he should be a 40 units per acre, is there a way to, for him to petition the commissioner or the city council to get that lumped into that zone?
Yes, we have an application. And I think it's, that would come to go to both planning commission and city council. And it would be for a general plan update because they'd have to update the general plan and then use map, as well as, it actually may not have to update the general plan, sorry. But they'd have to do a zoning code update and it would be the same process that we've gone through here. So, planning commission recommendation, and then two hearings before the city council.
Have any landowners come up and wanted to be included? Have any land or apartment complex owners come to this planning commission or planning department and asked to be included in the new zoning levels?
You know, recently, I did have a property owner reach out to me. And they're in the mixed-use neighborhood zone. And it was a property up Capitola Avenue. And so, I gave them more details about what we're doing. And I let them know that they could write a letter to ask the planning commission to be included. But I don't think they took that next step, so.
Okay, thank you. We will now open it up for public comment on this particular topic. Please step up to the microphone. This is your comments. We're not answering questions. And you are limited to a three-minute timeframe. So, anybody want to step up first? You can ask the question and we will try to respond, but it won't be a back-and-forth dialogue with the person at the microphone.
Good evening, everyone. Once again, my name is Jeff. My family and I live on Wesley Street, adjacent to the 600 Park Avenue apartments. And I'm here to express my great concern about the proposed zoning amendments. I believe, if my interpretation is correct, myself and all of my neighbors along Wesley Street will potentially be looking at roof lines at 39 feet in the not-so-distant future. If the setbacks are not increased and the heights are not reconsidered, I think we all can imagine what that impact would be. Like, if you're in your backyard and you're looking at your garden and your fence, and then, all of a sudden, a 39-foot building were to rise up. So, I'd like to implore the city to please study the impacts on the existing neighbors and residents more fully. Beyond that, I think also, I'd like to mention that there may be a slight misconception, at least in my mind, about 600 Park Avenue as it relates to maybe the existing zoning versus the existing conditions there. It's a very low-rise property. Maybe 10, 12 feet maybe are the roof lines. So, if you have a fence with lattice, like I do, you don't even see the roof lines. And I know it was mentioned that maybe 30 feet's allowed currently, but that's not how the property currently exists. And if this were to pass, conceivably, a developer, probably the property owner, will arrive with his architect within six months with plans for a 39-foot-tall building. That's my concern. And I ask you to please research this further. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think that, actually, it would be 36, 30 plus six feet. Yeah, thank you.
Hello, planning commission and community development staff. I want to give congratulations to both the staff and the commission on developing these guidelines. I think it's a real step forward in meeting our housing element plan. I did have one item of feedback. And the current change proposed to the zoning code and to the zoning map, they're kind of all smooshed together. I think if we separate them, it would make more sense because I think the zoning code amendments, those, I think, are going to be pretty stable once we decide that we're going to do this 30 and 40. I don't think in the next few years, maybe four, five years, that's going to change. But I do think the zoning map is going to change. We've come up with these seven high-density locations. But it was through a process of reduction from the earlier list of 30. I think there should be some kind of metric to evaluate whether these seven was a good initial selection. Over a period of maybe one or two years, there should be some success metric that we got something out of this. Otherwise, then, we need to start opening up to the next set. If you open it up to condos or we open it up to other single-family homes for conversion or open it up to other empty lots. So, I think there should be some kind of metric of success which will allow us to transition to the next decision point if this is not getting us what we want. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Liz. And I am a resident here in Capitola. I own a home about two houses off of Park Avenue. And when I first finished graduate school and was able to move back to this community, I was really fortunate to find some multifamily housing that was affordable in Capitola. And so, I just want to share that I'm a huge proponent. I'm very excited about these proposed amendments. I think we need more multifamily housing in this community. Living in a duplex, my kids were really young and we had an instant community of other families, excuse me, who lived really close by. And I really enjoyed that. I think multifamily housing is a nice way to build community. So, I'm a big fan. And it allowed us to save money to then eventually buy a home where we live down. And I also want to share that I know for a lot of residents, parking is a complaint or an issue. And one of the reasons that my partner and I decided to settle in Capitola versus SoCal or Aptos or Scotts Valley is that it's such a bicycle and pedestrian-friendly community. We have, we're a family of four, three drivers. My teenage daughter is now a driver. And we get by with one car. We bike and walk and make do with one vehicle. So, I just, I feel like it's very doable. So, I just want everyone to keep that in mind, that we don't need excessive parking when we live in this amazing community that's such a bike-friendly and pedestrian-friendly place to be. And, yeah, so hopefully, we can approve these amendments and get more people like I was, you know, 15 years ago in the community, getting their career settled. Now, I have a business here. I have an office on 41st Avenue. I get to bike to it every day. So, I'm just very grateful. And I hope we get more of this going. So, thanks so much for listening.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Suzanne. I'm Liz's neighbor. And I also wanted to voice my support for increasing the housing density here. My experience as a public health nurse for Santa Cruz County, working with unhoused. And so, I'm very strongly in support of more housing inventory. I also notice on my street that there are several second homes that are vacant much of the time, which is bothersome. And then, I also wanted to reiterate, last time I was here, Commissioner Q, you had voiced your experience of living in higher-density housing and your appreciation for your neighbor and who, I think, volunteers at Grey Bears or something like that. And for me, my partner and I decided to move into our ADU. And our front house is now renting to some of our friends who volunteer at Grey Bears, work for the county. One of them's a substance use counselor. And those are, you know, things that don't generally generate high incomes. So, yeah, I really support the increase, the changes, the zoning for more housing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Hi there, thanks so much for considering these really important and challenging issues. Last week, my daughters were walking on Bay Avenue. They needed some medical assistance. An ambulance was right there. They were getting great help. And it occurred to me that these people that have given us so much, I hope we can return the favor, you know? So, people who are working as emergency folks, first responders, can find affordable housing in the same communities where they work. It also appeared to me that my kids might be in those kind of professions, you know, when they're ready to look for housing. And I hope we'll have a good stock of housing in Capitola. I can't imagine a better place than Park Avenue. I bike up and down there every day. And again, it's like so close to schools, grocery, an incredible beach, a great place to have homes and get some young families in this community. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mary Margulies. I am a resident of Capitola. And I am someone who will be directly affected by the density. I love to hear people say that they are for housing. But I do not think that the people are coming up here and are talking about it are actually being directly affected. And if you are, I apologize. Like Jeff, there is a nice quality of life going on in this community. And I'm not just talking about the single-level owners. I'm talking about the tenants that are there now. Let's please bring this to the public awareness that if these zoning laws go into effect, that there is no requirement to make those units affordable. You've already met your affordability. There is nothing that says that those units have to be affordable. Yes, there is a caveat of 20%. So, if we do 30, we've got 80 units now. How much is that? 80 times 30 is 240. So, now, you have to have 20%, which is what? 48 units that have to be affordable. But there are 80 units just at Park Avenue that are affordable. What happens to those people? What happens to those people who get told that the state is going to help relocate them? But they're not going to come back. They're not. And thinking that they are is a fantasy. Now, I don't think that EMB is evil. I don't think that what they want and what the people have reflected about having more housing is evil. But please, do not deceive us and tell us that that's going to be affordable. Okay, it's not. The state needs to come up and help us. And I know that the staff was looking into getting some land from the state. Well, I do also have to say this. I do not see these kind of developments happening in the village, nor in Depot Hill. There is an apartment complex right on Monterey. It's very old. It's in a prime spot. I do not see that being rezoned. What I do see is you're going after middle-class neighborhoods. And you're giving a disproportionate burden on us. We work. This is not our living. This is not our living to come here and voice for YIMBY, okay? I'm sorry, YIMBY, I'm not trying to come after you, but you're paid to do this. We are not. We work all day, we have to follow your meetings, and then we have to come and voice our concern. On my last part, I would like to say that the meeting with YIMBY and the meeting and the questions that you asked the state were not disclosed to us as residents. I do not feel that that is in keeping with the Brown Act. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Webb. I have lived in Capitola since 1997. My husband and I rent an apartment up the street of Capitola Avenue. We've lived there for 18 years. And so I have a concern about the 912 Capitola Terrace Apartments, similar to Jeff's concerns that he expressed. I'm, my husband and I are definitely proponents of low-income housing, but we are in a borderline crowded block. There are, you know, so many multi, multifamily units there, and we do enjoy our, our, the little yard that we have, that we share with other families. And it is, like the previous woman said, it is a good quality of life, and so I just want to preserve that. I like hearing about the historical preservation part of it. I'm glad we get to do that with the pitched roofs. I have a major concern about the environmental impacts, because I think I heard that those are going to be ignored. Already with the bridge reconstruction, or now it's still not there, so many trees, as you know, had to be pulled out, and I regret missing all those meetings that I'm sure you worked hard on up to that point. Since then, we've had noise pollution, I don't know if you've heard at previous meetings, and an air quality pollution from those trees being taken down. So my fear is that more trees will vanish, be taken out. And then I also don't want to envision a building, like Jeff said, right in our, in our nice view that we have now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tiffany, and I'm a resident of Capitola. I actually live adjacent to the proposed structures on our zoning change for 600 Park Avenue. Before I go on, I'd like to say that, yeah, maybe you are exempt from CEQA, but is it the right thing to just ignore it? I'm going to back up what the woman before me just said, that there will be a lot of environmental impacts, and is it responsible to just ignore those? Also, I, I'm pretty sure that the Coastal Act does not relieve you of any liability for congestion problems that will arise from your changed, changed zoning. The other thing that I'd like to say is, the state is saying that you have to come up with these zoning changes. But it doesn't mean that you have to specifically increase it to the amount that you're proposing at this point. I mean, to triple the amount of occupancy at 600 Park Avenue for the people that live there now is extreme. I mean, you're going to look directly into our yards, you're going to look directly into our windows, which we like to have our blinds open during the day, and it's going to feel like people are living right on top of us. The other thing that you need to consider is that there is a solar, a solar act that protects our solar panels from being blocked from the sun for a specific amount of time during the day. And a three-foot, a three-story building specifically with a pitched roof would definitely block my solar panels, especially in the wintertime, and everyone else that lives adjacent to the property on, on Wesley Avenue. I don't oppose increased housing. I just don't think that we need it specifically at the Park Avenue. I would like to keep the park in Park Avenue and leave it to be a nice coastal environment. I don't want like New York City-style housing or residency. We live here for a reason, and it's because it's been such a nice town, and we've always agreed with the plan, your general plan and, and your description, which I have, but I'm not going to read it, you know what it is. Currently, there are 26 apartments for rent in Capitola. There are two available at the 600 Park Avenue location. These apartments are too expensive. The median income in Capitola is $96,000, but the rent on these apartments is $2,503,000. And you have to make over $100,000 to be able to afford to live there.
Okay, thank you. I love to cut you off at that point. Thank you very much.
Terry Thomas, I'd like to request a few changes if you adopt the proposed R-30 designation regarding the 600 Park Avenue apartments that abut our property of 53 years. First, the setback requirement as written would be a minimum of 3 to a maximum of 7 feet. This is way too close to the side and overwhelming to all the 19 surrounding R1 properties, especially if the buildings can be 36 feet tall. I am asking that it be changed to 25 feet side and rear yard setbacks that abut the single-family dwellings surrounding it, especially since our property and some of our neighbors is perched, property line is perched at the very, at the top of their very steep hill whose integrity must be kept. This would also help in preserving some solar access and privacy to local residents. Second, I would also like you to include that all windows facing the R1 area be either opaque or clear story to maintain the privacy on both sides of the zone. And third, preserve as much common open space as possible, regardless of how much private space for individual units is provided. If children are present, they need a place to play outside. I am relieved that there is adequate, there will be adequate parking on the site, as no parking is available on Park Avenue or Cliffwood Heights neighborhood. And I agree with the Lees. Please wait for the, for you to find out about the mall, and then tell the state that the mall site will accommodate most of these increases. Therefore, please reduce the Park Avenue Apartments area to RM20 to be more in keeping with the surrounding R1 neighbors. Thank you for taking these changes into consideration. I know that this, this is just one parcel that I'm most concerned with, but I'm sure that others would appreciate applying these changes if it would affect them as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Collins. I live on 46th Avenue across from the Capitola Gardens Apartments, and we lived there for near 50 years, actually. I wanted to first of all thank the planning department for the effort that they made to get the community involved in regarding the zoning changes, and I know there's been a lot of input lately. However, at the same time, I'd like the planning commission to reconsider the increase in the Capitola Gardens Area 6 and the Capitola Towers Apartments Area 4 properties. The proposed changes would double and triple the units per acre, as you're well aware. But just considering the Capitola Gardens Apartments, it would increase, potentially increase the number of units from 80 to 198 across the street from my house. And like I, like other people said, housing is great, we need housing, we need more housing. But it seemed a little excessive, a little bit reckless at the numbers that were set, and just so that they need economic, so that they're economically feasible or economically tempting to take up. I would say also too that the Capitola Gardens Apartments, there actually has been several, we've been here before, there's been several meetings about increasing the number of units on that property, so it's highly likely that there will be new, whenever the zoning is set, there will be new units on this, built on this property. The only question is how many? And that is up to you, which I don't at all, I, I wouldn't trade your places for the world, but I would ask you to consider, please, being mindful as you set the standard, not to set it so high so that you lose the ability to protect my neighborhood and other neighborhoods in this community. So I really appreciate you, and thank you for considering that, love a reduction of that. Thank you very much.
Good, thank you very much.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Janine Roth, and I'm a volunteer with Santa Cruz YIMBY. I want to thank the staff for their work and the discussions that we've had. We appreciate seeing the density increases in code and some accommodations for the abutment of single-family zones. Santa Cruz YIMBY simply advocates for more housing. I want to remind you that the Out of Reach Report said that we were, for the third year in a row, the least affordable area in the country. We do believe that this proposal in front of you does fall short of the commitment to ensure that zoning doesn't constrain multifamily housing. The fact that HCD asked for a height increase shows that the proposal did have constraints. And the accommodation for the single-family housing, which I understand, just introduces more. It's just not clear that this is going to yield additional housing, or if it does, it will be through the density bonus, which will actually bring more density. But here's the thing, Capitola has shown in the past that higher density works. There are homes built on 30, 40, and even 50 units per acre, but little has been built recently. As you've noted, redevelopment today is harder for a lot of reasons. It costs more, interest rates, et cetera. But another aspect to consider, and this goes to a point that someone made earlier, is that state law does require one-for-one replacement of affordable units and has strong tenant protections. That adds costs that a project must consider. Commissioner Howard, you brought up some of those other costs. So I also want to note that the housing element says that more than half of Capitola's residents are low-income. So these state law protections and the added costs are really very critical and must be considered in redevelopment. So I think more of the 38 parcels should be upzoned rather than going through future hurdles. I think a large parcel like 600 Parks should allow more than 30 units per acre if we want housing to actually happen there. And just one other thing, your housing element points to other opportunities ahead. You've got housing along commercial corridors like 41st Avenue, making the mall development possible, redevelopment possible. Any of the 41st Avenue revisioning report, those are all on the west side of the city. You must deliver on those. But tonight's program is really critical because it's one of the ways that the city can meet its fair housing requirement. And staff can explain that to you further if needed, but it's about making sure that people have real housing choices throughout the city. This is one of the few programs that will focus on the east side. And the last thing I'll say is just simply remember, we are talking not about numbers, we are talking about homes for people, people who live and work in Capitola, should live and work in Capitola. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Delaney Bollinger, and I live in Capitola Cove, which is at Grace and Wharf, and it's one of the properties that may be impacted by this redevelopment. I'm very concerned about these proposed changes that could come to Capitola. A lot of these properties are already apartments and condos. We, it's a very high dens, density area, yeah.
Excuse me, do you take your conversation outside, please? Thank you. Okay, go ahead, sorry.
A lot of these areas are already apartments and condos, and we have neighbors. I have a small little backyard that I enjoy, and what you're proposing is greatly increasing the density of areas that many are already dense. Everyone understands the need for, for new housing and the state's requirements, but I would really ask that you all look at other, other areas like 41st Street, the mall site, perhaps residential and commercial, you know, mixed development. There are people that are living on these sites right now. I'm a teacher, my partner works for the postal service in SoCal. If this happens, I don't know where we're going to go, because our, the places that you're talking about are sort of affordable here, right? I work in Silicon Valley because wages are higher over there, so I can afford-ish to be a renter here. I don't think I'll ever be able to afford something. How am I going to, first of all, I don't want to live in a four-deck, you know, apartment building, but how are we to ensure that people like myself will be able to get one of these new apartments should a developer come in without designated percentages of what is affordable? Like one of the previous commenters said, we're not talking about, you know, renovating Depot Hill or single-family homes, or someone that has a 3,000-square-foot home and making it a fourplex. These are people that live in this community in someplace, you know, sort of affordable places, and everyone wants more, more housing, but it's already pretty dense in, in these areas. There's not a lot of parking, there's traffic, and that will just increase exponentially. I understand YIMBY, I'm not in my backyard, I understand the sentiment, we need more housing, but I just don't think that this is the right way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Robin Peake. I live at 920 Capitola Avenue, and it's designated as a mobile home park. It's actually a PUD. We came together several years ago as a community and bought the land. Everybody that has a coach in that park, that is a manufactured home on owned property, we have been impacted by the freeway expansion. I get it, that people need to have a place to live here, that's why we arranged for what we arranged with the park owner in that park. I have some real concerns about the wedge that we are going to become. I see that it's 30 units per acre. Where are the four stories going to be? Are they on that lot? There are two lots that have been identified as four acres, I mean, four stories, is that one of them? Okay, great, I'm happy about that. Okay, so that's all I have to say, I hope you consider that. I recognize that if a developer comes in and decides they're going to make low-income housing, that all these regulations that you've just articulated so beautifully will no longer apply, so I hope you consider that in your decision. And that we're a wedge with the freeway, did I mention that? And the construction we've put up with for two years. Bye.
Thank you.
Hi, good to be last. My name's Melody Newcombe. I recently wrote all of you a letter, an email, because I live on 44th Avenue, and I wasn't really in favor of the Capitola Plus, I'll be perfectly honest with you, but I am a medical provider for many years, so I did recognize the need for housing. It's been a year and a half since they started the project, and I know exactly what it's like living across a construction project like this. It's really, really rough. So I'm hoping they're going to finish soon, but I did notice, you know, how affordable is affordable? There was an ad that went out that a one-bedroom was $2,800. There was an ad that went out that a one-bedroom was $2,800 if you meet the requirements. $2,800 for a one-bedroom, and they're probably not going to get a parking space, I can tell you that. Going forward, I live across the street from the Capitola Gardens. I wish that you would have used them in your example for me today so I could have understood better the impact that I'm going to have. I know the guy that manages the gardens over there, Shawn, really well, and, you know, he knows there's not enough parking right now. So I think that we should have a parking plan when we're putting these things together. We've got setbacks, we've got everything else, but we're not addressing parking. And 44th Avenue is already impacted pretty heavily right now, and it will be when, you know, they fill up the bluffs, right? And I understand that, you're going to have, I think, three EVs, you're going to have five handicapped, and you have 36 spaces for 36 multifamily units. If this goes forward and they go from a RM 10, I guess, to a 30 across the street from me, what are we going to do about parking? It has to be addressed, because I got hit the other day. I pulled out of my street, I back out, a lot of the apartments can go out front first, I have to go out back first because I pull in. I got hit from one of the gals on the street, she didn't have insurance, you know? Sorry, we can't see, there isn't any visibility, and everybody's really fighting for parking there. So I'm for housing, but I'm also for safety, I'm worried about delivery, you know, UPS, FedEx coming in, the ambulances, my son's a firefighter, I'm worried about, you know, fire trucks being able to come in, turn around, do things. So I have some real legitimate concerns. Please pay attention, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. So far, are there any other participants in the public comments section before we close it out? Last chance. Okay, again, thanks, everybody, for all your comments. We'll bring it back to the Commission for deliberation. So anybody, so just to be clear, we have two resolutions we're considering here. One is the multifamily zoning aspect of it, the other one is the ADU aspect of it, and then multifamily zoning resolution also has the change to the, a little bit of the change to the general plan language. So, but let's start with just talking about the proposed amendments to the two zoning codes.
What a miserable spot we've gotten ourselves into. Fifty years of crummy policy around the state, and here we are, fighting for housing, and you have half the community that's going to want it and half that doesn't. I see Charlie and Jeff and other folks out there thinking about their very expensive homes and a 30-foot building behind it, and I cringe. It sounds like a tough proposition. So as I, as I, you know, it's just maddening to think about how we got ourselves here. I think, you know, then I think, well, we've got to do something, right? We have to do something. I think we're down to two parcels with a 40, 40 units per acre. We cut it down from quite a few parcels before that, and unfortunately, there's just not that many places in our beautiful little city to do any development. So I lean in favor of approving it with a warning or a shot across the bow of developers that come through that, you know, a 30-foot wall in a neighbor's backyard is going to be a harder one for me to get over. So I'm inclined to vote for it.
Thank you for that. So I work in workforce and economic development for the past almost half of that game. So I work in workforce and economic development, and I go over numbers all the time for many jurisdictions. And looking at, you know, what we're trying to do here, I understand the qualms of the community, but cities, they grow and they change and they evolve over time, and we are a victim of our success. But we have to make room for the, for future for all residents here. These residents, like I mentioned before, are teachers, are firefighters, are public servants, you know, and nurses. So I'm in favor for approving this amendment change. I really appreciate the staff, you know, considering all the different setbacks and, yeah, my only concern is, was that setback, so if we were to approve this, yeah, it would kind of give us the tools for the future development. Doesn't say that we're going to do it, but at least when future development does come down, we do have the proper tools, and we're all in uniformity.
All right, yeah, I think, I agree with you that we're unfortunately the victim here for many, many years, probably more than, well, certainly since 1945, when the rules haven't really not been in favor of developing housing as the suburbs sprawled across the country. So, you know, we started with 30 parcels of land, we were going to put all of those at, you know, 30 dwelling units per acre, and then we looked at that and realized that's probably not a feasible financially for a lot of parcels. And, you know, there were all of the issues that the communities brought up in this meeting and other meetings of parking and safety, et cetera, apply. So this is how we ended up with the seven that we have, after a lot of thought, careful planning over the last year and a half. So I think it's, and we've consulted, we do have, we do have to abide by the state laws, by the way, you can't just blow them off. You can't just say, "We're not going to do what you tell us to do, Housing Department." So we have to do something. We may or may not get to the goals that they want, probably not in a practical sense, but we're going to try. Housing is clearly a problem, nobody, not nobody, but a lot of people that want to work here can't live here. None of our police department, I don't think, actually live in Capitola, is an example, so we do have that problem. So we do have to do something, and I think this, what we're working on tonight is a pretty good compromise. The staff has worked on for quite a long time, and Ben himself, our consultant, has done a lot of work on it. I think it's very good. But I do have one, one thought about table 1716 on the setbacks. So the note four, note, let's see, note four, right? That's the one that's, that was brought up by Terry, I think, in her email to us tonight. It says, the setback can be, and the interior, interior side ground floor setback be less, can't be less than three feet, but it can't be greater than seven feet. That seven feet, you could take Park, but you could take some of the other ones, the larger properties, that seems a bit tight to me. And I would propose that we change that to 10 feet. If you, you know, the only, that's the only thing I can suggest, make it a little bit, a little bit larger. I think that could work for most of the properties that are under consideration of the seven we're talking about here. Other than that, the solar thing, I think that was brought up, that gets addressed in the permitting process for the property itself, once we get into it, if there are impacts on that. That's why we have this daylight zones, to really protect people with solar energy from getting screened out by properties. So they don't, I'm not worried about that particular aspect of all of this. And I think we've seen examples in communities around us where they've gone to even higher densities, and it's actually worked out pretty well for the community. So I think with that one minor change, I would support this. So what we need to do, I believe, tell me if I'm wrong, we need to put up two votes, one for resolution one, for the first resolution, and then another vote for the second resolution. Is that correct? To be, just to keep the record clear.
There's three, three resolutions.
Okay. We have, we have a separate one for the general.
So there's the RM resolution, the ADU resolution, and then the general plan amendment resolution.
Yeah, I thought it was lumped in with the RM. Okay.
And the motion is for a recommendation, not for approval.
Right.
And one point, just of clarity, is that in one of the resolutions, we had the wrong year listed, and we'll fix that before we go to City Council for the date that the Housing Element was certified.
Okay, so we should have separate votes for resolution on zoning, EDUs, and then the general plan update, or we do all at once?
You could.
Let's do it separately, just to keep it.
Just to be clear, okay.
So let's start with the zoning ordinance change. We have a rec, a motion to approve that one in a second?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
In a second. Okay, can we get a roll call for that one, then? Motion is to adopt the resolution that starts on page... The, it's a motion, the resolution of the Planning Commission, the Capitol recommending the City Council adopt an ordinance amending municipal code title 17 zoning residential multifamily. That's the one we're voting on right now. Page 55 of the, of the package for tonight's meeting.
And is that with the amendment to the 10-foot? Okay.
Sorry, with the...
With the 10-foot setback.
Yes, with the, with one minor change, the table, table 1716, to change the minimum setback from seven feet to 10 feet. Note four.
I'm sorry, there's, can be no discussion back and forth with the Planning Commission.
Sorry, Ben, you're...
The, the 10 feet on the interior side setback, is that for all of the RM subzones or just for some of them?
Uh, sorry, good point. That was for the RM 30 and RM 40.
And just to be clear, Kitty, we are voting to approve a recommendation to the City Council of these positions.
Correct.
Okay, now can we have a roll call on that?
Commissioner Howard?
Aye.
Commissioner Q?
Aye.
Chair Esti?
Aye.
Okay, the second resolution is for the, again, the ADU zoning ordinance, which is 17 dash 48, 17.48, and that resolution basically makes some changes to the ADU standards and then some changes to how we address the historical issues with ADUs. And that starts on page, for clarity, trying to get to it here quickly. Resolution number blank, resolution of the Planning Commission, the City, Capitola recommending the City Council, oh, this, sorry, let's do the general plan because it's in order. Resolution, the City Council adopt a resolution adopting a text amendment that general plan use element residential multifamily land use designation be consistent with proposed reservation, provisions to the RM zone, et cetera. Okay, let's make a motion on that one first.
I'll motion to approve. I'll motion in a second.
Okay, now can we have a roll call for that, please?
Commissioner Howard?
Aye.
Commissioner Q?
Aye.
Chair Esti?
Aye.
Okay, the next one is relative to the ADUs, chapter 17.74, accessory dwelling units, and this resolution is a resolution of the Planning Commission, the City, Capitola recommending the City Council adopt an ordinance amending municipal code title 17, chapter 17.74, ADUs, and find that adoption of the ordinance is exempt from CEQA. That's page 89 on our package.
I'll motion to approve.
I'll second.
And a roll call, please.
Commissioner Howard?
Aye.
Commissioner Q?
Aye.
Chair Esti?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you, everybody in the public, for your comments and for listening to this debate. We do appreciate everything that you have. So these, again, are resolutions to recommend that the City Council adopt these zoning changes, and those will be handled at future council meetings sometime this fall.
The next City Council meeting on this item will be on September 11th.
Okay, let's move on to item number eight, which is the Director's Report, and we have item A here, a Cliff Drive Resiliency Project Report.
Thank you, Chair Esti and Commissioners. Before you tonight, I wanted to give you an update on a couple items. The first is the Cliff Drive Resiliency Project, that's going to be coming to you for an update at your next meeting, and it's specifically regarding the updates to our local coastal program. So because we're in the coastal zone, the city has a local coastal program, it's made up of two components, and if we can go to the next slide, please? The two components are the land use plan, that's like your general, it's a long-range planning document, similar to your general plan for the area within the coastal zone, and then your implementation plan is actually your zoning code that's within the coastal zone. Next slide, please. So for the Cliff Drive Resiliency Project, the city received money through the California Coastal Commission, and they've supported us in, not only for these, the money will go towards the updates for the LCP, but also towards the project itself. We needed matching grants, and they came forth and helped, I think it's $450,000 that were provided, but as part of that, we need, we have requirements to update our LCP, and that is what I'm bringing forth at our next Planning Commission meeting. We've got a very outdated land use program, it's been updated twice, the last time being, I think, '85, so it's time. It's been on our list forever, but it's a big undertaking. And then also our LCP implementation plan, we're constantly updating that, as you know, who did it tonight. So within the new updates, we're addressing increased coastal erosion, sea level rise, public access needs, and there's definitely future, just planning for adaptation along the coast. But we don't say exactly what those adaptation strategies are, just that we'll be working on it in the future, and we do have, right now, the Public Works Department is working on a sea level rise study. Following that, we're going to go after more grant money in order to do some coastal adaptation planning, so that'll be the next two to three years. Another reason for, within this update that I just want to bring to your attention is there's a lot of, in our existing very old land use plan, there's references to the Southern Pacific Railroad, and we're updating all of those references to the Regional Transportation Commission Railroad right of way, and with everything that's gone on with Measure L this year, I just wanted to get ahead of it and say that these are cleanups. When there's references within our land use program, referencing any work to be done within RTC corridor or vice versa, RTC doing anything in our corridor, I've simply deleted those references. So if we go to the next slide, this is a list of all the changes that are proposed, this is on our webpage. There's also a link to the Cliff Drive Resiliency Project webpage, so if you, if you go to the next slide, everything's available on our website. If you go to the community development page, there's a section on the local coastal program updates that will take you to the link. So just want to get the word out there that there's a public draft available, and I'll be introducing this at the next hearing. So, next slide. Public meetings, we just had a community meeting in which the project for the Cliff Drive was discussed, that was last week, on August 12th. The City Council is going to get an update on this project at their August 28th meeting next week, and then Planning Commission on September 4th, and that'll be followed by a first and second reading at the City Council, I believe, in October.
Was there much of a turnout on that community meeting?
I think we had maybe 15 people, it was a great turnout. Quite a few engineers, too, it was interesting. So, next slide, please. So my other update for you is just the Capitola Mall, and I brought this up at the beginning, but at the next City Council meeting next week, I'll be bringing forth the re-options for the City Council, and it'll be within Ben's current contract, where slated to implement the housing element, and we've actually gone over our budget in terms of this multifamily update, it was a lot more processed than we initially anticipated. And so we're going back to update the contract, and we'll need more funding for the implementation of the mall, and they'll be looking at updates to objective standards and the possibility of a form-based code as well. So we're putting three, three options out there. The staff report will be published tomorrow, and it'll be a discussion at City Council next week, so pretty exciting. At our next meeting, I'll give you an update, and based on the deadlines of that, the mall redevelopment project, I might be asking for meetings on not only the first Thursday of the month, but probably the third Thursday of the month as well, so just giving you a heads up. And that concludes the Director's Report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. That being said, we will adjourn, and as stated in that report, our next meeting is on Thursday, September 4 at 6 o'clock. Thank you.